Mike, Director Leoni is going to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a few reminders. Are there any members of the media that are here that would like to introduce themselves? Great. Just reminding everyone to mute their cell phones. And do we have any, doesn't look like we'll have any cards for visitors unless they're online. But we'll talk about that in a moment. Also, just a reminder, board members, team, please remember to turn your mic on before you speak and then turn it off when you're finished. First of all, we're going to have the review of the agenda with Superintendent Corden.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Great to see everyone here tonight. The review of the agenda is, the agenda is as was published with one addition, we do have a recent hire, Kathleen Walton's been hired as a language arts teacher at Redbury High School. And that has been added to the consent agenda tonight. We also want to welcome Director Strick Cliff and Director Hammerston, who are joining us remotely tonight. They're on Zoom tonight, so I hope you are enjoying the time away and good to see you on Zoom tonight. Madam Chair, that's what I've got tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and we have the consent agenda, which is in your packet. You've had a chance to look that over. Items for consideration are the minutes from the July 10th, 2024 Board Meeting, $3,500 in gifts to the district, surplus items and recommendations for hire, and notices of resignation and retirement. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Consent agenda?
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We don't have, do we have anybody for public participation online?
Online is our input.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we do have some discussion items. I just want to do a quick review of boardmanship. Of course, we could spend many days talking about that, but I'm just going to highlight one section. So our goal from our strategic plan is that all students will receive the care, support, and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures. This past year, we did our best to serve our students, employees, and community with great thought and care. We had some tough decisions to make, but as stated in the Oregon School Board Association manual, we suspended judgment until the facts were available. We developed alternative solutions to problems. We waited until all the evidence was in and discussion completed before making a decision. We identified the significant problem from the evidence presented. We differentiated between problems that required board action and those that required administrative action. We supported Superintendent Corden in his authorized functions. We shared responsibility for board decisions. We weathered criticism calmly. Congratulations. We continuously learned more about the job of being a board member. So there are a few other items that we can include in that, which would help us to be a better board member. That we would continue to prioritize reading all board packets, emails, and communication from our superintendent and his team. They're continually keeping us apprised of much information. We continue to ask questions, especially of the leadership team, and that's especially helpful if we ask questions of them before board meetings, allowing them adequate time to properly research our questions to present at public meetings. And here's a little one, but it's very important. Maybe avoid dropping in at the central office. They're more than happy to help us, but we need to respect their time and try to call first so they can be better equipped to help us. While we served with diligence last year, greater decisions with greater responsibility and greater impact are ahead. We must remain vigilant in protecting the education of our students and building honor and respect with the people we work with and the community we serve. And comments from the directors. Do you have anything that you would like to add? Okay.
Madam Chair, just in reviewing, it was great to really go through this again. And it made me realize that, yeah, I, I think we really, all of us, or at least for me, was a good reminder that, you know, there, there is a lot coming that we really need to have great attention to. And, and I appreciate that we do get a lot of data from, from, you know, the cabinet members. They really help us to, when, when we do come to decision-making, we have more confidence. And so it just, just made me realize that, you know, I think we're doing a lot of these things well. And, but, yeah, we're, we're going to be on it.
Great.
Full throttle.
Thank you, Director Kermitz. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. We have the 2024-2025 Supervisory and Confidential Employee Designation. Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie is going to handle that for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 11 in your board packet, you will find the designation of supervisory employees. And the collective bargaining law requires that public employers designate supervisory employees as any individual having authority in the interest of the employer to hire, transfer, suspend, layoff, recall, promote, discharge, assign, reward, or discipline other employees or having responsibility to direct them. So each year we have to ask for the board to approve our supervisor employees. And then also on page 12 is our designation of confidential employees. And the collective bargaining law designates these people as one who assists and acts in a confidential capacity to a person who formulates, determines, and effectuates management policies in the area of collective bargaining. So you will see the list of our confidential employees included on page 12, and we are asking for board approval, please.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the 2024-25 Supervisory and Confidential Employee Designations as proposed.
I move that we approve the Standing Supervisor and Confidential Employee.
Do we have a second? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The next thing we have is on page 13, you will see the proposed board committee roster for 2024 to 2025. I want to thank each and each one of you for your cooperation in drafting this roster. I would entertain a motion to approve the board committee assignments roster for 2024-2025. Anyone, anyone want to make that motion?
I move to approve the standing committees' appointments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Great. All opposed? Motion carries. I'm moving on to the School Board Mentorship Program. This is a continuation of a program that was started by Director Cotton and Director Howard Johnson. It was good to introduce board members as to the workings of setting an agenda and, and all of that. It's part of the a program to help us with people who want to take our places. Very good. I lost the word for it. The dates and the participants for the 2024-25 year include August 15th through January 23rd is Director Anne Krimmets, and January 24th through June 25, June 2025 is Director Michael Leoni. And I would entertain a motion to approve the 2024-2025 mentorship dates and participants as proposed.
I would make the motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Corden, would you please give us an update on the Esser-funded facilities?
You bet. I could talk all night about that. Actually, I think we'll have Director Northam is going to, Director Finance Operations would probably gladly have me talk about this, but I'm sure Cheryl take this one on. And, and again, this tonight is just our Esser-funded update. Next meeting, which is a work session, we'll talk about facilities in general. So thank you, Cheryl, tonight for giving us update on Esser-funded facilities updates.
This is just a quick update on some of the Esser-funded facilities, projects that we have been doing this summer, specifically this summer. We have security vestibules going in at five different elementary schools, and we have one other Esser-funded project at Hugh Crest. And so we just have some pictures up there. The Sunny Slope Security Vestibule. Did type in a title. Is there not a title there? That's okay. I've got some dates on there. All of the vestibules will be substantially complete by the time school starts. Substantial completion means that the spaces are functional. They just may, you know, you may have some touch-up paint. You may have some other things. Maybe something's not working. It has to be replaced. But, and they actually all becoming functional really by the end of next week at this point. What you see here is the Sunny Slope Security Vestibule, and it is substantially complete at this time. Turned out to be, I think, kind of a pretty nice space on the inside. And you can see the picture of the outside from the hall and then looking down from the main hall into the security vestibule. So that was a, that was good. At first, we were planning to do some kind of a camera system because the main office is set so far back in. And then we said, hey, why don't we just use some of that space in the hall? So that looks pretty nice in there. Next one. This is the Green Security Vestibule. Both Green and Melrose were put off a little bit. However, the huge majority of the work was able to be done this summer. We were going to start them earlier this year because we do have a spending deadline of September 30 for the Esser funds. Things being what they were, they all got started a little bit later, but the benefit of that is they're all going in mostly when school is not in session. Green Security Vestibule, you're looking in at it from where you will enter, if I'm not mistaken, and some other extra pictures there that Chelsea took and stuck in there for me from like the outside. Green Security Vestibule is pretty cool because it's also to the north side. When you first walk up from that parking lot next to the mini mart, there was that brick wall right there that was the outside of the office. We've moved that back a good, I think about seven feet. So we were able to get a walk-in space for the vestibule before it was going to be just like more on the outside. Now it's interior and we got a whole nother office space. So I believe Tammy, the principal, will be moving into that new office space, but they have another space where she was at that they can use for other functions. Most of our schools are pretty short on, you know, specialist spaces, meeting with a therapist, and we were able to get a couple extra rooms across the district with this vestibule project. Next one. There's Melrose. Also, Melrose started a little bit later, but you can see even that space. At first, we didn't think we were going to be able to improve it much. That office is really tiny. Actually, I think it's going to be pretty nice. Again, you can see to the right there that there is an additional space built onto the back, the principal's office, if you were ever in Tammy or Principal Lamica's office. So tiny. So now they'll have a regular-sized space, you know, and even the reception area. You used to walk in and you were like, Marsha was like right there. And now, now you, yeah, you go into the security vestibule, then if you're buzzed through, then you can go visit Marsha, the principal. Fullerton for this one. The most expensive of them, but that's because really the space has changed dramatically. They're getting a couple extra workspaces on the inside by again taking a large portion of that, you know, that vestibule out into the breezeway. So this one's a little more tricky because of some of the, the levels of the building itself and ADA access, but we're working through those. And they should be able to move in next week, I believe. Again, we have punch walks scheduled for several locations, early punch walks this Friday, so we can begin to do some of the little touch-up items, or how come there's a wire hanging out of the ceiling kind of thing in advance of, in school starting. Hugh Crest. Hugh Crest space is also changing very dramatically on the inside. Again, we're using a lot of that entryway space and they're getting another, they're getting some copy room workspace and a whole nother room for someone to use as an office or as a small meeting space. To the right of that, you'll see the big boom on the truck, and that's working on the Hugh Crest bathroom. Yay. It's actually turning out to be quite a really, a very, very nice facility. It's, it feels like it, we still won't ever be done with it, but it will be functional by the time school starts. We walked through it today. It's got really cool, I love polished concrete floors, polished concrete floors, and it's just, yes, I'm excited by concrete, you know, it happens. But anyway, so that will be up and cooking for this time school starts. They'll be pouring sidewalks, I believe, next week to go from the buildings and from the, the the paving area. And then Tracy will come along the week of the 26th, and they'll start patching in the asphalt around the sidewalks to tie into the parking lot. And the final photo there at the bottom right, it's a little tiny, but it's just showing some of the security fencing that has been, I believe, 100% done at this point. Definitely tell you, so all of our projects were approved in advance by people from ODE as they come from federal funds. We did obtain that permission from all those projects. They will all be done easily by September 30th, and we will spend all of our COVID money, our Esser money.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you. The next item is English Learners in Oregon. We have our annual report from Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie. This is a mandatory report as required by the Oregon Department of Education. And Michelle Nie made a similar report to us last September for the 2021-2022 school year. Take it away.
It's a little weird. Almost there. Sorry. All right, you will find the English Learners in Oregon Report on page 14 in your board packet. And ORS 327.016 directs the Department of Education to prepare an annual report on English learner program funding and student outcomes. The report's intention is to describe the population of English learners in Oregon and provide a summary of district and state progress towards meeting their needs and objectives in ELD programs. We are required, districts are required to provide this report to our board by September 4th, or September 1st of every year. So you have this in front of you. I did want to share some information about our English learners here in our school district. So we currently, for last year, so for the 23-24 school year, we had 28 languages spoken in our district, and that could include one student who speaks that language, but we do have 28 different languages. I did include some of the more common ones in the district on the slide. We have 170 students who are identified as English learners in our district. 60 of them are active English learner students, which means that they are actively receiving English language development instruction daily from one of our English language development teachers. And those, 38 of those students are in our elementary schools and 22 are in our secondary schools. And then we have 110 students who are, have exited from ELD services, but we continue to monitor them and check in on them as they move through our system. And we have four students that are designated as migrant ed students. So that means their families are, work in one of the industries in our state that are identified as migrants. So it could be the vineyards, it could be the blueberry farm, it really just depends. But just to let you know that we do have four students that fall into that category. And then I listed our three English language development teachers, which they are under the purview of the Department of Teaching and Learning. And we have two that serve our elementary schools, Carla Addington and Marissa Fairbanks. And then Alicia Wishert supports our secondary schools. So entertain any questions you may have.
There's one teacher for the high school level for 22 secondary students. Are they all in one class at the same time, or are they just, are they out in regular classes and they?
Yeah, so that means they get one period of day of English language development. So we have students at the middle schools, and then we have students at the high school. So our ELD teacher goes between those three schools and teaches a period with those students. Sometimes it's two periods at the high school because they split the kids up depending on where they are in their English language development. So she travels.
So, okay, so, and we've got a bunch of different languages. That teacher or those teachers don't know all the languages?
No, they are teaching them, they are exposing them to the English language. So they have a curriculum that they utilize that's for English language development, and it's about immersing students into the English language and supporting them with acquiring their language skills.
Is there a specific then curriculum that it's not by grade level?
No. Well, there, there is a specific curriculum that is used at the secondary. It's based on language, where you are in your language acquisition, so there's different levels for it. And then there's the imagined learning and the materials that they use at the elementary school.
I wondered, are all three of those people have been ESL endorsement?
So I understand it's the three teachers, it's their job, they're to teach, get on, on the English part of it. But a couple of those languages up there, I never heard of. But how do they communicate? I mean, they gotta be able to, sir, are we getting help somewhere else? If, I mean, how's that work? I mean, am I making sense?
Yeah, you're making sense. And they, I mean, the vast majority of our students are Spanish-speaking students. I mean, we do have, you know, some of the other languages as well. There's lots of translation software that you can utilize, Google Translate and different things that they're able to. Many of these students, if they are not newcomers to our country, have some basic communication skills, so they, they, they have their basic communication skill, but it takes, you know, five to seven years on top of that to get the academic language. So they really have to be surrounded by the language and have that modeling for them, but they do have ways to communicate. And now we have, we do have Language Line that allows us to communicate with parents that in any of the languages, it's a, you call into them and you get an interpreter on the line, and then you do a three-way call with the parent or if a parent comes into the office as well, so we can talk with them and, and provide.
Cool. One other quick question. Are the three enough? Are the teachers, do we have enough?
At this point in time, we do have enough. Our numbers have stayed pretty stable, and we haven't grown remarkably over time. It just seems it's kind of slowly ticking up, but we constantly reevaluate to see if we need additional.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, that these students' parents also don't speak English. Or they probably don't. Do we have interpreters that help out when they do call or when they do?
That's what I was speaking about. We have Language Line. So that is an interpretation, an interpreter service that you call on the phone and you get an interpreter, and then you do a three-way call with the parent and yourself and the interpreter, and it covers vast majority of languages. So you're able to communicate with the parents for conferences, or if they call into the office. We actually used it here in the district office today for a parent who called in.
All right, that's good.
Thank you, Michelle. And now we welcome the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, sure, Cheryl. Well, we're sharing. Oh, there you go. Look at that. Go team. All right. So, hey, I, thanks for the conversation on our English language learners. I have a, it's a former English language ELD teacher myself, near and dear to my heart. We could practice some of the things you can do to teach language, like TPR and some of those things. Michelle has ESL as well. It's great. It's, and we do have a great welcoming place for kids to be. But it is cool to get, go through one of our cafeterias and just see the immersion of all these languages and people and cultures together, and thanks to our staff who's doing great things. I have a short report tonight. I wanted to start by saying thank you to the board. It's good for the public to know the work that these volunteers put in behind the scenes, the hours and hours they put in to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And so thank you, board. I also just want to say how excited I am for the start of the school year. I can't wait to get kids back. We've had kids back in the summer. It's been great. But we have such great staff and such great kids. And I am excited to capitalize on the momentum from last year. Every building is trending in the direction we want to see. The speed of that, we want to increase. But it is not possible unless there's alignment and consistency between the board and the staff and the kids and the community. And so thank you to everybody for that. It's been a busy summer, not just with capital projects, and there's so much to be excited about how the buildings are changing. And thank you for the report on Esser, for example. It's great to see that these things happening. What's equally or more exciting is some of the things that have been happening with our kids in the summer. We had over 200 kids, kindergarten to fourth grade, working on early literacy. And there were many districts across Oregon that could not find staff to teach or people to run these programs. And I just want to give a shout out to our staff who stepped up with that reservation. Our administrators, our classified staff, our licensed staff, we want to be there. It was awesome. We had such a great group of kids who needed extra support. The summer slide is a real thing. It's, there were times it's taken us to mid-October or later to get where we left off in June. And what's awesome about this summer is we had kids that, for example, are struggling readers or striving readers. Their maybe component of reading is difficult, maybe it's finitive awareness, comprehension, fluency is accurate or something, accuracy. And so this grant provided by the Department of Ed really allowed us to key in on those kindy first, second, third, up to fourth grade kids this year. And it was amazing, amazing for kids. They showed up. They wanted to be there. Our staff wanted to be there. Awesome. So, so many thanks to everyone involved with that. Additionally, thank you Melissa and her team for supporting another great year of extended school year services for our kids. We've got kids that, that receive extra services through the year and through the summer. And so thank you in keeping those skills up. It was a wonderful program. And then a lot of good things have happened so far. I just want to thank some of the transitions. I'll, I'll highlight RHS tonight of really being intentional about the ninth graders coming in and designing ways for kids to feel connected and excited about those transitions. And we're seeing those at all levels. So it's been a really great summer. Excited to get kids back full-time, but it's been a great summer of learning. I want to talk just for a few minutes about the STRAP Plan or Strategic Plan. This, as you know, in some organizations, strategic plans aren't talked about. In some organizations, strategic plans are talked about, but they're a poster that you buy. And we haven't done that. The Strategic Plan for us is a document that drives the way we organize, think, hire. And I'll talk about a little bit more about that, but we continue to prioritize the middle of this plan. The middle of this plan is students. And we're continuing on the same focus we've had, which is around care, support, instruction, graduation with a specific focus this year around literacy, around math, and about graduation. We're supporting that whole kid. And so that's, that is where our focus is. Instruction this year, we've had great meetings with our leadership team. How about this and how to expand that work and really accelerate that work? The STRAP Plan also demands that we have great people working with our kids. And so we're moving forward on, with the majority of our positions are hired for right now, and our classified and licensed ranks are still openings. And we're hiring with this in mind. If this excites you as someone in the community listening to this message, if you want to focus on kids and their success, If this excites you as a someone in the community listening to this message, if you want to focus on kids and their success, those are people we want to talk to. So that's been, that's been a real focus for us and continues to be. You can't read this, I just want to put this in here because um, it's super, super small and I'll show it to you later. You do have a blue, a blue copy there, but I just wanted to highlight and thank our teaching and learning staff um, and our, our staff generally who are out providing a lot of professional learning. If you're, I interact with people in the community who are sometimes like, how was your summer, how's your summer? Did you take time off? And, and it's, there's no time, there's really not a lot of time off because there's so much to do, it's awesome stuff. And if you get a chance to go through this list, it's on your, on your table in blue there. There are so many um really pertinent, relevant, salient opportunities to learn and to come together and to get better over the summer. In terms of learning how to do this, um, what we don't want to do is we don't want to surprise people in September and August with a new pathway, a new agenda item, a new program, a new movement. And where staff are like, oh, my gosh, what is this? So we try our best to make sure it's connected to the strat plan, connect to our goals and try to provide opportunities for people to lean into this work well before we see kids. So they can plan with that in mind, we've done that. Uh, the five D is a good example, we're on year four and five of that now of really leaning into that work. So all of this is to support the strat plan work. That's been great, thank you Jill, her team and Melissa and everybody who's been with Michelle and others who have led this work. Um, it's important, we've got some people here and our new people in our TNL department and it's been fantastic. So we're excited about what's happened and what's happening in terms of supporting staff this year. We know that staff through supportive, support our kids best. And so we're excited about that. Let's talk about enrollment for a minute. We are, um, we have our eye on enrollment, we continue to look at enrollment, we've seen fluctuations, uh, particularly that post, you know, during the COVID times and the kind of post-COVID times. Fluctuations have been there, I want to show you an enrollment report um from, from last, uh, from, from June, just a minute. We will have a much better idea about, about our enrollment as we get a few weeks into the school year. Um, there are, will still be people in the community that are moving in. For some people starting to see the yellow cheese wagon bus rolling around towns, like, oh, I need to go get enrolled, that happens too. Um, there are shifts in enrollment. We'll have a close eye on that. And the board has asked for more information up to date on where we're at with enrollment. Um, and so we'll continue giving you the monthly reports, uh, those will be coming out of my office. And uh, thank you to Janet and Steph and others for helping with those. Where we've been at, to get an idea, there, there was a sense of having a, a pretty significant enrollment decline. But if you take a look at this, this is a report from June sixth, so at the end of our last school year. Where we were with enrollment, uh, overall enrollment total was we were down, you know, about eleven kids overall from the last, from June of twenty-three to June of twenty-four. We have seen stabilization happen. I'm optimistic that we'll see an increase in enrollment for a couple of reasons. The programs that we are putting together to support students are incredible. Um, we've talked about this in the CTE space, the medical pathways, the um, what's currently happening in our kind of vocational CTE world, the mechatronics and the advanced manufacturing pathways. There's a lot of excitement about that, that will draw students to come here. Um, what we're currently doing in terms of producing outcomes will draw people to come here. And then we're working closely with city and county partners on the land swap, for example. We do anticipate there'll be more housing in our school district in the next couple of years. And we do think that the numbers will steadily increase, but we will keep the board apprised to where we're at. Cheryl and I sit down and talk about projected enrollment and there's a process for that in which we anticipate enrollment. But just know that as we anticipate and think forward, we also have a financial plan of making sure if students aren't there, we're not spending as if they were here. We've seen that dilemma in certain school districts recently in Oregon where there's um over projections that aren't accounted for on the fiduciary side, which caused the district to be in an upside, upside down financial position. We have not been there and won't be there on that. Let's see, fast forward here, okay, I want to talk a little bit about this um and relate this to the strategic plan. We had a meeting with our leaders last week. If you're not familiar with Simon, Simon Sinek, he's a really good thinker and he talked about a couple of years ago by this golden circle that um, and he was talking to mostly like Fortune fifty companies in the world. And the idea is any organization that thrives needs to understand why it does what it does. And you have to start with why you do what you do. And he gives, he has an example about Apple, for example. Apple's not about iPhones, but they need to, they've done better, for example, and all businesses have done better, whether that's in their stock price, their valuation, or their outcomes, like for us with students. If you can understand why you do what you do, most businesses talk about what they do. They don't know about how they do that. So about the why, is we think about our strategic plan and you overlay this idea of starting with the why on our, our strategic plan. What becomes very clear is our why are our students. That is why we do what we do. This is our why. And like on our, on our strat plans and we'll have updates on these soon, Chelsea's been working on those. The why is clear. Why we do what we do is because we believe every child's unique. We believe every child can learn. We believe that children have an infinite value. That's why we do what we do. That's why we're in education, because we believe in democracy. We believe that children have infinite worth. And we believe that all, that, that communities that invest in children and families are communities that thrive. So that's our why, that's our, our why. Our how we do that sits on the outside of our strat plan. That's how we're going to get there. We need to do some work in effective operation still. We still need to do some work in appropriate and timely instruction. We need some work about safe and inclusive environments. We need to do some work on leaders development. Those are areas in which that's how we're going to get the work done. Our what we expect is what the board's put in the middle. What we expect is all kids are going to get the care, support, instruction they need. That they're going to graduate with a plan for the most successful future. And so it's been great to have this rumbling with our leaders and our staff to really be, to refine when we talk about our strategic plan, for people to really embrace and understand what we mean by that. So we've got a great start to that, and I think that's a good connection with some of the, some of Simon Sinek's work. All right, um, getting close to the end here, I said this was short. Um, I want to talk real quick about some upcoming uh work session topics. We are next, our next meeting, we're going to be reviewing some of the uh, construction projects and some of the um capital outlay and even uh going to visit some of our um district-owned sites we have, even just the land we own. Uh, the board has asked for a little bit more information on kind of where we're at with, where's the district set? What do we own? Where are properties? What, what have happened with these other updates? From Melrose Septic to the new lights, to Hugh Crest bathroom, to whatever that might be. So we're going to talk a little bit about that next week and then actually um have a, a um, bit of a tour around some of those. Um, in, in, yeah, field trip's gonna be awesome. We, I did put a link in there to um another, uh, it's another kudos for um, Cheryl and her team. We, we did recently apply for, we're, we're awarded a grant on um, I guess, energy efficiency, but there was some money that came through the federal government for some upgrades. Uh, Eastwood and Joe Lane were, I think there were seven districts across, maybe ten districts across the state of Oregon. Seven across the state that were awarded this um, these funds. And we were lucky enough, if you haven't heard, that Eastwood and Joe Lane made the cut. And so that's exciting too. Um, the twenty-fifth for the work session, we're going to meet with Susan Miller from Wolfert again to, to engage in the long-range facilities plan work. It's going to happen, she'll join us remotely uh for this meeting. Um, and the board will be prioritizing the, the things that the board wants to see, expects to see in a long-range plan. And then uh, in October, the ESD, we welcome them back to follow up on the spring conversation uh around the services received there. And uh, one last thing, there's a couple of things here, but we are excited to get our kids back in school. I, I've talked to several parents who are excited for us to um welcome their kids back to school. Um, we would invite board members to uh join us in the first couple of days, get out to the buildings. Last year, we had a great plan, the smoke hit and it kind of messed a lot of things up on that first day of school. Uh, we will welcome kids back on September third, that uh week after Labor Day. Uh, please reach out, reach out to myself. Um, Janet will make sure that you have a chance to get out to buildings if you can make that work. And then also want to invite you to, to mark your calendars for August twenty-second. Eight AM is our new teacher orientation, always great for teachers to interact with board members and to see the support that they are blessed to have in this organization. So with that, Madam Chair, that's my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jared, we appreciate it. And now we have individual reports for the directors. And I will start with those here at the table and then move over to those who are on Zoom. So uh Director Cubic, are you ready for your presentation, your report?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And in the last few weeks, I've visited, I think, five of our schools. I have them identified, not with a lot of students or faculty, but for looking at projects and just seeing how we're doing. I visited Fergrove, I met with a teacher and I only got her first name, her name was Vera. Uh, very nice, very cordial, looked at the vestibule that's completed. Talked about uh her role and it was uh, it was a therapist, uh adaptive therapist or something like that at the school. And then I just noticed that that's one of the schools that has their, all of their play space uh locked down during the weekend, on weekends. Uh, and then finally, uh, the Fergrove was looking really good, looked really good. And I also noted the art, the children's art they have on their fence tells me something about what's behind the fence. And I'd like to see something like that at all of our schools because we have these black junkyard or prison fences around our schools. And I'd like people to know, this is a school, there's kids playing in here, but that's just a thought. Uh, I visited Hugh Crest, looked at vestibule project, substantial work. Surprising what we could get out of this project for the uh Hugh Crest activity. You stole my thunder, so you had slides, I don't. And um, and then the restrooms, I looked at that, they're coming along really well, ve- very, very nice project. The play spaces are for growth, I mean, uh, Hugh Crest has completed their fencing. The play space and fields are open to the public all the time though. Different administration, different situation. It raises to me an equity issue about access to our schools. They have a new asphalt track and um they, uh, at the day I was there, the front of the school needed to be cleaned up. There was trash all around, not just construction trash, but just junk. And that was just an observation because I'm proud of our schools. Visited Fulton and observed the summer reading program. There was a teacher teaching that I knew. And so I was invited in and got to observe and do a little hands-on and, and uh it, I, I was so impressed. The student-teacher ratio was really good. And the involvement by the kids was just phenomenal. They were just, they were so involved with that, that learning, it was so cool. Uh, their vestibule project was going a little bit slow and the fencing around Fullerton is literally done. But again, it's another school that's locked down days, weekends and all times, so the community's locked out of that facility. There's no play space available to the neighborhood. Uh, Winchester, wow, lots of construction. I could not believe what's going on at Winchester, everything. It was construction, painting, siding, seismic reinforcement. The seismic reinforcement at Winchester, literally done, they're just about finished. Um, there are other things going on, lots of, of activity. Uh, they um also in quite, totally enclosed with fencing. Um, and all the recreational space is uh, the neighborhood's locked out of that also. Uh, I'd had a discussion with uh SB James, a fellow named Frankie. He says his name was Frankie, I wrote that down. And he just gave me an update on how they were doing and their progress and their expectation. I, I would note that Winchester, all of us know, but it's a unique site with multiple levels, parking on the north end and the south end and minor collector streets on the north and the south and driveways on both east and west sides. It makes it a challenging campus, I think, for a, a lot of reasons. Uh, but there's so much going on, it's a wow. Uh, over at Eastwood, their seismic retrofit is almost complete. It was a big project, SB James again. The, it was clear, it's our second largest school, I believe, numbers-wise. But also because of the way the school's designed, if we ever get to a bond again, that they really need a second gymnasium, a second gathering place, a second lunchroom, whatever it might be, but at that school, they are, they're short on that facility. They're all, they are a hundred percent fenced, but they have an interesting, they did a, uh, they got a, a track inside their fence, but it was done with a grant and they have to have their fence open because it was a requirement of the grant. And then also, uh, there's one playfield, a disc golf course and trails outside their fence. So there is open recreational area to the community at Eastwood. Uh, they have a very congested entry, but it's a one-way road in and out. Um, and I met with the principal, uh Jake Hughes, and he probably saw a school board member there and said, hi, can I help you? And it was that he and his uh, uh, office manager were very friendly. He showed me around and we talked and uh very, very cordial and helpful to her. Um, they had something that I thought was interesting. I put it, it's a business card. Yeah, I know you can't read it, but it has Eastwood Elementary, it has the principal, his email, the office manager and her email and the phone number. And they give them out parents and so they can have them handy. But previously, they had refrigerator magnets with that. And I thought, what a great idea. I mean, I put one on my refrigerator, so it just, it was, it was a really good idea. I would encourage just to look into that too. And then finally I visited Rose, that's the last school I was able to visit in my busy last few weeks. I uh was introduced to Randall Olson, who I see is in the audience. What I would say about my visit to Rose was positive energy um and clearly focused on student success. And wow, you can feel it when you, almost when you walk in the door. Um, and that was really neat, it was very enjoyable, very informational. They have at least three programs, Roseburg Virtual Schools, Roseburg Alternative Education Center and Horizons. And I guess there's some changes in Horizons and they may have some others, but we'd be, and I'd be interested in some updates on that as it goes along. Looks like it's moving forward successfully. No construction, no fencing, their playground and the park uh above them is open to the public. And um, they do not have a vestibule, but they have a locked controlled entry. A little different setting and they don't have as many students going in and out or parents. And very informal discussion about focus programs, quality teams. And um, it was an, it was an, it, the end of a busy day and enjoyable uh visit. That's it.
Thank you so much, Director Cubic. Rod?
I learned a couple of things. You talked about the summer slide. That happens to all of us, I mean, I tried to make a motion, I a motion, thirty years on the board, I couldn't remember how to make a motion, summer slide. I thanked you and your team that's done this, but the high school really looks coming down the freeway. I don't have to close my eyes and look at all that black mold crap on the buildings, it's all cleaned, it looks so sharp. And so whoever had a hand in that, um, thank you so much. I think we should give a big compliment to the contractor for all the assessors, all these projects that were that, I mean, they really stepped up in my book, I mean, um, they've done a good, good job. And uh, I would highly recommend them to, yeah. We don't want them to get too busy, if something else comes up, we'll need them, but they really stepped up for SB James and they should be commended for.
Right, could I add something to that? I, excuse me, I don't want to take your thunder, but also I clearly noticed that SB James had contracted with local subcontractors for work. There were local businesses involved in this project and these projects.
So um, I also saw, I genuinely don't do Facebook. Some reason somebody said, oh, you gotta look at this. I did see, uh, I don't want to call it an ad, but I guess it was for Roseburg Virtual School, kind of. Uh, I don't know if you put it together. That's, that's a program that um, lots of folks in the county, they don't know that we have that. And I think that was, that was, it was very well put together, talking about the mascot and all that type of stuff. Yeah, um, uh, that was really, that was really, really sharp to have that in there. And um, I I hope that program grows. That's an opportunity that most school districts here don't have, so I appreciate that. And then you, my interest piqued a little bit. I'm not going to get into discussion, but we should maybe have the discussion of the black fencing. There was a lot of thought that went into that, why it's black. And 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 I'm not beating anybody up, but I'm just saying there was a lot of thought into that. And then there's been discussion about um keeping the grounds open on the weekends, dot, dot, dot. And you have an issue of vandalism, which was just rampant. Dot, dot. So maybe that's a discussion that we can have in building and sites or wherever. Now, I think it's a good reminder. I think we're just trying to protect our investment right now and the kids do need a place to play. I understand that. I agree with you. Still have to protect your investment, but I think it's a good conversation to have. Because it's been a while since we've, we've had that. So uh, that piqued my interest. And uh, let's see. That's it.
Thank you, Director Cotton. Director Crimmits.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, as you've described all the work that's going on, I was thinking oh, the time's clicking, you know, fast, but I was glad that we had approved to start school a little bit later and that, you know, that is gonna be helpful, you know, for I think too, for maybe the smoke, you know, we're really trusting that um, we won't have as much of that, you know? At that time, giving us a another week, ten days longer. So I I I'm glad that worked out for our spending on all these projects that are wrapping up. I'm gonna take a trip over there and look at it, because I mean, a picture doesn't, doesn't do justice to really see the, you know, the magnitude of of the changes that we had to make. And um, thank you for managing that so well. Appreciate it.
Call me anytime. I'm very happy to give any one of you a tour and probably give you the the inside, you know, story on funding and the history of things and all the things that we've changed that's maybe not apparent to, you know.
Yeah, maybe a few of us could, you know, get together. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Crimmits. Director Leoni.
Yeah, um. Uh, Director Cubic, thanks for that update. My goodness, you were out there just at all the, it seems like most of the schools. Oh, yeah. Well, that was a lot. And so thanks for, that was a real great um update, kind of, kind of made me think, well, what did I do this summer? So uh, so so that encourages me to to go out and and visit the schools um more and and just uh, and just see really what's going on. So this is sitting here. Uh, so thanks for that. Uh, I don't have a whole lot else to offer there, um, except I'm excited about the year. I think this is going to be a great year. Thank you. Cheryl, for all your work and for everybody's work. It's just incredible what's happening here. So, thanks.
Thank you, Director Leoni. Um, Director Shirkcliff, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I've got nothing to add.
Great. Thank you so very much. I would like to um, Director Hammerson, we're excited that you're back and we would like to hear what you have discovered.
Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, Steve, we got you.
Okay, cool. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I had a great time last weekend attending the O S B A Summer Conference. Uh, it was about half the size of last year's summer conference, I think, probably because it wasn't an election year. I'm glad I went uh just as last time, because it turns out uh, I'll be in Orlando, Florida for the next Commercial Insurance Annual Conference. Uh, so that'll be year two of me missing the regular annual O S B A Conference in November. I think it's important to note with these conferences that um with O S B A are quite important to attend for board members as our positions are rapidly changing in terms of ground level school issues and strategies that we need uh to be addressed presently and into the future. One of these items I learned is artificial intelligence uh and how that's going to be impacting our schools over the next decade. Uh, Friday, we had the pre-conference. Uh, I found the session that was most impactful was the Effective Leadership and Cultural responsiveness session. Uh, we got a tip um from one of the districts that uh, whenever they have an important issue that they like to communicate out to the community regarding safety or fundraiser fundraisers or uh, whatever the issue is, they put an advertisement on the back of a utility bill. I'm not quite sure how they do that. Or what kind of deal they had, uh, but it was a cool, it was a cool strategy, cool idea for the district. I did notice there was a lot of focus on uh racial and gender issues uh fitting into the category of underserved populations in school districts. And there was a African American gentleman from, I believe it was uh Westland School District that spoke up that kind of inspired me to speak for about five minutes about the importance of maintaining a holistic messaging approach on these issues. Because I find them to be pretty delicate. I stated that I often found in my personal life and on the school board that there are a lot more consistencies and underserved populations when you focus on rich versus poor, as they say, socioeconomic differences in the child population. Um, and surprisingly, I got a pretty positive response on that. It was kind of a landmine conversation. Uh, but day two, we dipped into smaller group sessions. I attended the school law session and the policy fundamentals session. Um, in school law, we discussed Senate Bill seven three two, uh, otherwise otherwise known as the Equity Bill. Uh, Senate Bill fifteen oh two, which covers our requirements to provide video recordings of our public meetings. And uh, House Bill twenty eight oh five, which highlighted the grievance process on behalf of the public. Uh, we also covered a a current court case, which I know I'm not going to do this name right, but it was a Byalostuski versus Cummings, uh, which is essentially new case law that requires all board members to have to submit their personal notes created in public meetings to the public if requested by the public. Uh, so sticky notes are now fair game for board members that take notes uh to give to the public. I thought that was kind of interesting. Uh, I won't bore you with the policy basics session. Um, I did get a handout from that. If anybody wants to go over with me, I can uh provide it and discuss it. But uh, day three was probably the most impactful for me personally, and that was the artificial intelligence or A I session. Uh, you know, American Revolution took eleven years to formulate and lasted seven years in war. Internet email was first, first email sent out was nineteen seventy one. Uh, internet formulated and took hold in the nineties and smartphones pretty much changed everything in the past couple decades. You know, decade or two, uh, but the A I revolution, it's a lot more aggressive in terms of timeline and implementation. We didn't even really start talking about A I impacting humanity so greatly since the past few years post COVID. Um, and at the state level, they're already utilizing the technology in schools. So um, the last year and a half have constituted a rapid revolution of the technology to the point that it's being utilized for disabled children uh to do things that took entire, you know, entire week on uh, one thing takes a couple hours nowadays. So uh, we learned about uh generative A I and the way it's being utilized to interface with children, how generative A I can tailor to visual learners versus hands on learners or or different, and uh, how to how to view and handle A I from a teacher perspective. Uh, one of the greatest lessons I learned from that session was how we should perceive A I as a tool as opposed to a cheat code that deserves criticism, criticism or punishment. Um, there's been a lot of articles out in the uh, in the news on, you know, students in college or high school uh, getting busted using A I to write term papers or essays. But it should be viewed as a tool that uh can either be misused or enhance the learning experience. Uh, if a student is just copying and pasting A I generated material like we've seen in news stories using Chat G P T to write an essay and copy and paste, obviously that behavior should be shunned or identified. But if the student is using A I to enhance their work product, it really shouldn't be put in the same copy and paste bucket. Example that was used uh in my generation was when they came out with the T I eighty six calculator in high school. Uh, of course, it made math, you know, doing math easier, but if the teacher utilized the tool to get the study materials done as opposed to shunning technology, it often proved proved to be a uh, create a better learning result. So um, of course, you could play Tetris or Pong or whatever on it during class, and of course, that was happening. And should have been addressed appropriately, but one of the examples that the instructor said that really struck a chord with me uh was the capabilities of generative A I meeting a student as they were um, as they were, and then enhancing the learning experience. So he was talking about how the A I could um learn the student's particular style of receiving information and build uh connections off of it. So for me, like growing up, uh, if I could have learned world and U S history in that, in that perspective, um communicated to me like in terms of N F L strategy and history. I I think I probably would have stuck, it would have stuck a lot better at the time. You know, like if if A I had a um, learning tutor that can make connections to George Washington and Vince Lombardi or the merger of the N F L and the A F L and relate that to the Civil War, that, you know, kind of loose examples. But I think I would have learned U S history a lot quicker and would have um, had a lasting impact on how deeply I could understand the issue. So that was, that was kind of cool that um, the perspective that they gave. But we also had a a region school board, school board meeting, which was good for us to network. There is a bunch of different school district or school districts represented in Douglas Coos and Curry County. And the result of that was we decided to set up a uh information sharing group on Facebook. So when they have road shows and stuff that are applicable to school board issues, we can attend. Um, overall, uh, I highly recommend all school board directors in our area to get the opportunity to attend one of these. Um, I know the information I receive will be utilized locally in the future for sure. So I also want to thank Jared a lot for his attendance. The O S B A conferences are always a lot more impactful when our superintendent's there. So shout out to Jared, and that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you, Director Hammerson. That was a great report. Thank you. All I would like to say is how excited I am for our field trip coming up. You know, we're gonna be on a bus. We're gonna do it right. That meeting will begin earlier, but you'll be notified about that because we want to um allow plenty of time to have our meeting, a a shorter meeting and then um take a tour of of all that is our school district. So thank you very much. Um, our next meeting is August twenty eighth, the board work session. And all of our regular business as a board is concluded. Barring any objections, this meeting is adjourned.